Here we go, folks. I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Thank you all for coming. Would you please, would you please accompany me in the Pledge of Allegiance? All please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Everyone is here. I would like to all introduce you to Amalie Groob.
Amalie.
Amalie.
Hello.
Okay. She's our news, she's our second student rep. She's a sophomore this year. And she was tapped by Mr. Campbell. Yes. So, the next thing on, on the agenda is the swearing in. Now, I'm not sure how all this will work. Amalie, is your mom there?
Yes.
Okay, so here we go. Amalie, would you please stand? Okay, we have to try to keep you, raise your right hand. Do you, Amalie Groob, swear to execute, to the best of your abilities, the duties of a student, school committee member, which include the following? To provide continuing input for the school committee's deliberations. To strengthen communications between the school committee and district students. To represent all students and facilitate the discussion of all sides of issues related to students.
I do.
Yay! Did your mom get a picture?
Yes, a lot.
Okay, very good. Hi, Mrs. Groob, I know you're back there.
I've been hiding, hello.
Hi, I'm glad you got a picture. Very good. Are there any adjustments to the agenda, Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, we need to add under new business, section five, a motion to accept the first reading procedure DJR, federal procurement manual.
And you said section five, C?
No. Section five, new, but, yes, C, correct.
Okay, good. I was guessing that's where it went, so I was hoping I wrote it in there correctly.
Actually, I should modify that. It should say section, it should say procedure DJR in exhibits one and two.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of September 16th.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Shumway.
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski.
Yes.
Ms. Dykett.
Yes.
Ms. Bells.
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Motion passes unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the September 2nd. Note, did I already do September 2nd? What did, what did we just approve?
September 16th.
September, no.
Yes.
September 16th. Oh, okay. Good. I was reading an old draft copy. For all of the people that have joined us just before, before we do anything more, I just want to remind you that you can get the agenda and follow along with us and you'll have a lot of the supporting data that are associated with the agenda. Any of you that care to make comments when we have a public comment time, please do not treat the public comment as Facebook. Just put in your comment and that will be to help the school committee come to decisions about various policies this evening. And... I think... You see that it was a little bit more difficult maybe to get to the main meeting this evening and that's because we've tried to add a little bit more security last night or Monday night at the town council meeting was profanely hacked. And so, we're trying to avoid that.
Jenny?
Yes.
May I just add that maybe on that screen as well? Because I actually started to second guess whether or not my computer was named what it was because it didn't say anything about being in a waiting room.
Yep.
And so, I was like going through my system preferences just to make sure my name was on my computer because I thought maybe it wasn't, that's why I wasn't being let in. Not that I was in the waiting room for long, but you just might want to say if you are waiting, it's because you're in a waiting room and you will be let in. But that was excellent to have that when you first came in.
Yep. Well, I think you just said it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. Moving on along, personnel. I'll entertain a motion to approve the nomination of Edward Bear as Winter High School math teacher.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and second, is there any discussion, say, from Mr. Campbell or from our superintendent?
Certainly. Mr. Bear comes with it to us with 25 years of experience teaching math in the Levitt District. He retired last year and we were fortunate. He was on our sub list and we kind of snuck him out of the junior high so that he could come down and teach full time here at the high school. We've already found that he's able to build the necessary relationships with the students, which will allow him to be successful in getting the mathematics topics taught.
Thank you very much. Any additional discussion? Is Mr. Bear with us this evening? He's coming down from North Country there, I saw. Okay, all in favor? Ms. Shumway.
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski.
Yes.
Ms. Dykett.
You're muted, Jana.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Bells.
Yes.
I'm yes as well. Motion passes 5-0 and we miss, we wish Mr. Bear a great deal of success. Superintendent, report, please.
Okay, I have a lot and I have to tell you, please ask me, please ask me a bunch of questions because I feel like I've been over this 100 times, but never with you guys. So, I will feel like I'm repeating myself, but I'm not. Or I hope I'm not, I should say. And I have a lot of notes that are kind of organized, but it always gets mixed up. So, I want to start with the financial report and again, it's still early in the year, so all I can tell you is that in meeting with Amanda and looking at this myself, we've, we're, we're in fine shape, we're about 25% through the year. So, you'd expect the, I mean, in a perfect world, the revenues would be about 25% expended. That's, it's not really the case. We only have one that's below 75% remaining. And you'd expect the... revenues to be up or not quite at 100%. And that's true because we get monthly installments from the town and from the feds, I mean, not the feds, from the state. But all in all, the budget's in real good shape. I don't see anything that would cause me any concern. If any of you see something, you certainly can ask about it and either I'll have an answer or I will get an answer for you. Enrollment numbers are, I guess, surprised, not surprisingly down. The, we have a number of students that are being, that, we have a lot of students who be remote access. There's, they do count as a part of our enrollment. But we also have a higher than usual number of students who be in homeschool, about 40 more than we, we've had in the past. So, our September enrollment, unofficial October 1st enrollment, I should say, is 800. That's down 53 from the, the end of school last year. So, that's, for me, it's a grave cause of, for concern. That's a, that's a pretty significant, that'll be a significant chunk, especially when I add it to something I'm going to tell you in a few minutes about curtailment. So, the...
So, can I jump in then?
Sure.
Sorry. So, I was, I was pretty surprised to see that difference in the number down to 800. So, after I caught my breath and I started to work out the numbers and of course, that'll be about $530,000, just in round numbers, in state subsidy, right? That will be lacking.
I haven't done the math, but whatever 53 times about 8,000 is.
Yeah. I just rounded off to 10 and so that's how I do that math easily. And so, so are, you're quite confident that all of our remote students are included in that enrollment count?
That I am very certain of.
And I forget, you know, it used to be that the state, in order to calculate our subsidy, would take account twice in the school year. But then I think they decided to just do it once and I can't remember whether it's the fall or the spring that they take their count. Can you help me with that?
They still do both. We still do October 1st and April 1st enrollment. They do a, they do an averaging now of more than just one year. So, it's, the impact isn't felt that dramatically in one year. That's still going to be a problem for us.
Yeah. Thank you. Ms. Shumway.
I just, I think you sort of answered it, but just to clarify. So, the state is not going to be making any accommodations for, for COVID in terms of student count and the fact that we have a higher homeschool population as a result?
Yeah, I don't know that the, that answer, that hasn't been, that hasn't been definitively answered yet. I asked that question just about once or twice a month on a meeting with Eileen King, who's the Deputy Executive Director of Main School Management, who has the commissioner's ear every Thursday. And there was some discussion early on about some sort of whole harmless provision for, for enrollment. It's still being banted about, but it's, it's, you know, it's, no, no answer has come for... The reality is that you can imagine, and that's a big number for us and probably percentage wise, it's bigger than, you know, even a Portland, you know, bigger districts because, you know, that 53 out of 800 or 850 for us is a higher percentage than, say, 200 out of 10,000. So, it's, it's all relative. But it's, it's, it's going to really negatively impact. But I gotta, you know what, let me jump into, I won't have to do this necessarily in order. This is important to couple this conversation with the whole notion of curtailment because it's a, it's a good new, it's a great news, bad news scenario. So, as Chairperson Guyer likes, I'm going to start with the good news, the great news, actually. Almost a near certainty that there will be no curtailment this year.
Wow.
That's, that's huge for us.
Yeah.
It's huge for us because under direct orders from the school committee, I've been working on identifying some money in case there was a curtailment. So, that money's still there. The bad news that goes with that is we're, we're being told very clearly that the next two fiscal years will be really lean. We can expect reductions of this year, in the next year, school year, I should say, FY '22. And FY '23, we can expect pretty significant decreases to our funding. So, at least in that case, we have a little bit of time to plan for it and we'll see. We'll see where that goes. But right now, the, the pretty strong message out of the governor's office and from the commissioner's office is no curtailment for this year. So, that's, you know, I, I don't know if, if that means, if we're already looking at a pretty lean, if all things being equal, we're looking at a pretty lean 20, FY '22 year and then you put 50 less students on top of that, we're going to be looking at a really seriously challenged budget year.
There's a question, Ms. Dykett?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, and this may already be happening, but there's talks going on with the town as to if we have money left over this year due to you trying to save in case there was a curtailment, where that money is going to go.
Well, that's, that's a great question. Just met with the auditors, the town manager and Verneese from the town to kind of have that conversation. It's a little premature for me to say that sort of publicly, but we are...
Just as long as I know that you're talking with them, that's all I need to know now.
Yeah, yeah. The really important thing, particularly for Chairperson Guyer, is that we did have that meeting with the, the auditor is here doing the work with the audit and so, there's a lot of conversation around past deficits and expectations for other, other things that we are supposed to be funding or have supposedly funded in the past that may or may not be true. So, there's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts right now.
Okay.
Going, going back to the student enrollment, is the decrease in student enrollment impacting any one building or is it spread fairly evenly amongst all three buildings?
To the best of my knowledge, right now, it's pretty, it's pretty well spread over the three buildings.
Thank you.
That, and, and that's a great question. If anybody doesn't sort of get that, if it was, it was impacting one building? I mean, honestly, if we had 50 students less at the high school, then we could, we could easily consider a reduction in staffing. But if you take 50 people and you spread them out over the entire spectrum, it's, it's really, really challenging to think about cutting any positions or, and or programs because, you know, that, that may mean two or three in a classroom, not eight or nine or 10. So, it's, it's a great question. Any other questions on those two things, I got a lot more.
Go for it.
All right. So, I'm just going to call your attention to this. We'll tell you that I did this because it was what was done in the past and it's way early from my perspective, but I did include in my, in your packet, the budget development calendar. And that, this is probably going to need to be very fluid, flexible as well based upon how things start to look and develop financially. But we will have to go through the process of identifying a number that we'll be asking the taxpayers to support and we'll begin that process, from my perspective, in November. And then, then we'll culminate with going through the process, meeting with the school committee, just the town council, getting their approval and then going out to the voters, part of the validation process. So, it's, it's done. It mirrors, in structure, kind of what you have received in years past, at least last year. The dates are somewhat different and they may be even more delayed than this if we don't have any more clarity from the Department of Education as we move forward. No reason to think that we shouldn't be able to move forward with the first part of this because, as you all know, there's been on, on the committee for a while, there's, there's two very distinct parts to developing a budget. One is developing the expenditure side, which is about going around to, to the staff and the buildings and saying, what do we need? What do we need for staff? What do we need for equipment? What do we need for all this stuff? And so, we, we take a look at what we need and then we, then we take a look at what we have for finances. And in the best world, best of all worlds, what you need and what you have for finances match and you have a, you have a pretty easy process to go through. But it's, I can't with a straight face say that I think that's going to happen this year, given what I just reported about the reduction in enrollment and the information coming out of the DOE for our 279 funding for next year. So, it's going to be a challenge for us. And I know it may seem, maybe for some of you, you think if it's going to be a challenge, let's get going on it sooner than, sooner than later. But I, I have the complete opposite take. There's no sense to get going on our expenditure side when we're not going to get really good numbers or the other side of it until probably late February, early March. It's just unlikely that we're going to get that. So, you know, we could do all of that, that preliminary work, but it just doesn't make a lot of sense. So, anyway, we can talk about that more because we have time. But that's, I just want to give you a rough idea of what I was thinking in terms of a budget timeline. So, just so you know, that is very similar to timelines I've used in other places and I am comfortable with that. I just need you to be comfortable with it too. The CARES Act and the CRF grant, I want to talk a little bit about that. Already talked about the CARES Act, I'm not going to spend any time with that. We've already had that approved. I earliest this week sent out a, an email to the entire committee saying that our, the relief funds, COVID relief funds was approved. That's COVID relief one, COVID relief funds one. There's the governor, you may have read a couple of weeks ago, the governor released the second half of the COVID relief funds. So, for us, we're getting an additional, so that's being referred to as CRF two. So, CRF one is what I sent you the email on, that's been approved, that's whatever. I don't have the number in front of me, 589,000 or something to that, that effect. No, that's not right, but it's, whatever it is. And the second round of funding is 689,000, $669, 689, 669. That sounds really awesome. And it is because there are a number of things that we need to, to do. But there is, there are several things that are, that are incredibly scary for me as your superintendent. The first one is that this, this application is due next Wednesday, a week from today. That's, the only thing that's scarier than that is all of the money, the entire $690,000 approximately have to be spent by December 1st, ah, December 31st, December 31st. So, that's the same expectation of the, the CRF one funds and they've, they've been trying hard to get the feds to extend that deadline. And basically, what that means is we have a lot of things, particularly with the, with the first round of money. We, we have additional staff, we have additional cleaning going on. We have, we have a lot of things, but they only are funded through December. So, what we've been in the process of doing, and this, what's going to be hard is we're not going to be able to get specific board feedback. We don't necessarily need board approval, but it would be nice to have your feedback looking at things that we, that we can spend $690,000 on in the next three months, basically, November.
Well, I, I did text everybody and they do have some feedback ready for you.
Okay, I would prefer that you send it to me via email because I have, I already have a significant list. The, Mr. Delisle, for instance, who's on this chat is, he's requested almost the entire amount of money, all very, just, all very justifiable, really important things that we need. The other proviso that, that is really important to remember in, in remembering is it has to be spent by December and it has to, there's two other pieces. It has to be directly an impact of COVID. It can't be, we need, I don't know, whatever, it's, you know, it's not, not just replacing equipment that is outdated and whatever. It has to be specifically related to the impact of COVID and it can't supplement, I mean, I'm sorry, it can't supplant, which means take the place of money that would normally be in our regular budget. It can supplement. So, the one thing that I want to sort of throw out there that I'm, I'm probably most pushing for is we talked and there was, I provided some documentation to the school committee about the product called O2 Prime, which is the, the product that goes into the UNIVENTS and is third-party documentation, talks about it, it kills the viruses that are in the air, all viruses, not just the coronavirus. And we got pricing from Siemens to do that in all of our classrooms that have UNIVENTS. Along that same line, the school committee may remember that we had a, a local person donate five air filter, filtration devices that are used at NASA for five of our, well, three of our classrooms, two, two of our classrooms and three of our isolation rooms. And so, the other thing I wanted to put in here, and I reached out to that gentleman today to say with our second round funding, I'd like to get 30 more of those devices for our classes in the old high school wing that don't have UNIVENTS. And so, that will, we already have a pretty good plan that we feel, Mr. Ladd and I feel, to get good air circulating in those rooms. But now to have it filter out is, I have a way to filter it out effectively is, is even better. So, those two things together come to $310,000. So, it's, it's a pretty big chunk of change. But we'll tell you that I did reach out to Siemens today and I, and I said very nicely to the person that I know really well down there that their product is too expensive and I need them to give us a, a better deal. So, he told me he would, he would look at the pricing and he would give back to me. And I, I, so I'm, I'm hoping that we're going to see a $40,000 or $50,000 reduction in their pricing, just because I asked. We'll see, we'll see if there's any, if that actually happens. So, I, I am, I was, I wasn't joking when I said Mr. Delisle has a handful of other suggestions that are, the, the top one is, is basically $300,000 price tag and I don't have the information in front of me. And Mike, you don't have to explain it right now, but it has to do with replacing our infrastructure, infrastructure because with everything we're doing this year and will continue to do this year, it's putting a tremendous burden on an old system. So, there's, there's a lot of those things. I have a laundry list of other things that, that people have, have given me, other technology devices, other things as simplistic but important as like a tractor with a snow thrower on it for the, for the grade school because when the snow starts to come off the roofs, it blocks the place where the air comes into the building. So, if we need fresh air, but our, but our air vents are plugged, then it doesn't do any good. So, we, so that's, that's a possibility. So, I'm willing, certainly I can stop and listen to what people have been thinking about if you want to throw some things out or you can just email them to me.
Mr. Petrowski?
I don't know, two things, but I don't know if anybody saw the Lewiston Sun Journal today, but there was a good article dealing with superintendent's comments about what's going on with this extra money and the time and et cetera. But I liked the comment that was made about someone had decided that they could purchase extra buses and actually found two to purchase. And since one of our major problems is getting transportation for the kids to go to activities after school, I would recommend that we look seriously into purchasing another bus.
So, you want to go back to owning buses?
Only rarely, okay, do I want to do that. But I, I don't see Northeast coming through with the extra buses that, transportation that we need to get these sports teams around. And it's going to get worse in the spring versus, well, you know, it's just going to get worse. So, why don't we take and try to solve that problem? And I do not have an active bus driver's license right now, Houston.
Yeah, the only one I know on staff, besides the Northeast charters drivers that has an active bus driving license is me. And I'm, I'm not driving buses.
Oh, come on. You know, when I used to coach, I always had to drive my teams.
Okay, so that's one suggestion only. Anybody else? Or can you email them to the superintendent? Did you want to say anything, Jana?
No, I just, I mean, I had already emailed you and...
Right.
Texted you and just the fact that, again, in Christian sort of... texted you and just the fact that again, and Kristen sort of reiterated that as well, that you know, staff hopefully has been asked individually because they may know as well what they, you know, what they need or want or whatever else. So I will say one thing that we did at Windsor is that's been extremely helpful that we've all used is somehow they were able to buy a bulk teacher pay teachers account where you can, like, we had seven hundred credits and teachers were allotted so many credits. And when we went remote or with distance learning, that was huge. And I know a lot of teachers use teachers pay teachers. And the stuff, it's all ready to use and ready to go out like that. But that was very instrumental for flipping and obviously because of COVID, it got used up quite quickly.
Jana, can you send that to me?
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you. How are our students doing? Any comments from either one of our student reps? Okay. All right, Mr. Superintendent, it's all yours.
So the last thing I want to and I'm I'm not reluctant to share this information. I was a little more excited to share this when I when I first put it together because I was, I thought I'd found a, well, I didn't. I did find a big number of potential savings. Anticipating at curtailment. But I had, now I'm going to report this, but this is really the work of Ida and Colleen and a little bit with Amanda, but I had to take a look at the staff that was budgeted for the FY twenty year versus the staff that had been hired and to do a comparison. Because I know there's at the high, at the high school, anyway, there's at least two full time positions we just didn't fill, haven't been filled and haven't been able to fill. And so at this point, we've decided not to fill. So I was wondering what that those numbers look like. And I don't want you to get all excited about these numbers. I say that because I was when I first looked at them. But we have approximately three hundred and forty seven thousand dollars of positions not filled. And so we are, that's that's a different. That was before we hired Mr. Bear, I will say that. So that number is is lower because that was that was in full disclosure, that was Megan's position. And so that was a regular vacant position that really needed to be filled. Mr. Campbell was teaching during the day, which we didn't really want him to be doing. Doing an amazing job as always, but really needed that position filled with a full time person. And as Mr. Campbell has shared with you, that was, we did hire somebody at the top of the scale. So that number is a little bit lower. I don't. Don't anticipate that that'll stay completely there because we're, there are some other things we'll be looking to do. But that will be a sizable expectation that we we have a fairly sizable chunk of of money to carry forward at the end of the year. So we'll keep an eye on. I'll be keeping an eye on that, I should say, as the year goes on. But that was great work. I can't really show you guys. I I think in your packet, you got this little
We got. We got a little graph, yeah.
Little tiny thing for me. I got a five page or three page, sorry, spreadsheet with all of the staff's names and the different categories highlighted. They did. They did amazing work and very much appreciated. So it's all. That's really, really good news. I think it's really good. Last thing that I want to share, it's not specifically on the agenda, but Megan and I are meeting with Kurt Jack tomorrow. He's the guy who does the the teacher evaluation model. He's the teacher evaluation guru, so to speak. And we want to take a look a little bit at what the philosophical history was and developing the what's referred to as the P P A here in in the Whitsmore School System and then go back and revisit what we thought was going to happen versus what is going to happen and see how much they align. To the extent that they align, and I'll be honest with you, I don't think they do. But to the extent that they align, we don't really need to do anything with it. It, to the extent they don't align, then we may have to reconvene the committee and 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 take a look at some of the issues around teacher evaluation. He's got great historical perspective. We appreciate that. Kristen has a question.
Yeah, I know. Ms. Jamoy?
Um, I have a question actually about the positions that haven't been filled. I've been hearing rumblings that we haven't filled the French position at the high school. Is that still true?
That's true, and we're not going to.
Because I've I've and I'll encourage the students and the parents to reach out, but I've heard that it's very difficult to learn French online. So I just, I know that we've been having difficulty finding applicants for that position, but sorry, frog in my throat, but I don't know if it's worth just to keep it having it out there and hoping that something does come up at some point throughout the year because from what I understand, there wasn't an online French for class. And so all those students were put into AP French and they're struggling without support and trying to do that online.
Mr. Danda Welly?
I'm one of those students. I know I. It's true. I was actually thinking about that. And I mean, obviously, like, I'm already signed up for the course and like dropping it. And it's three other students. It's two other students and myself. And right now, it's just, it's different. It says it's like teacher support or whatnot, but it's just very hard to work around those hours, especially for some of the athletes. I myself, like, I'm not doing my full sport right now, but like I, my two other peers that are in the class are. And it just happens that the teacher support hours and that Zoom class are during like some of their their sports practices, which granted, that won't be all the time. But it's just kind of difficult, especially since it's kind of skipping a grade of French. So it's just a little tougher. So I don't know if we can. I don't know. Maybe like, I guess, maybe the idea that popped into my head, and I, again, don't know that much about it, but like a virtual support, maybe a teacher from another school that might have, that we might be able to like, again, sorry, I'm just a student. I don't know what I'm saying. Like we had, um, we had.
Don't ever say just a student around me, please. Go ahead and continue to express yourself. You're doing.
Sorry, we have a miss, like, we have Miss McLaren as a part time. So I don't know if like a teacher from a different school, if we kept that open and maybe changed the like name of it to like, I don't know, like teacher support part time that could just help us with some of the stuff. Because like, I mean, every teacher teaches different. And I've had personally two French teachers, and now my third one is this year, which I haven't even met personally. Because I I had worked today during one of my, the one of her Zoom meetings that was supposed to be today. And I clicked on the link and it didn't even like come up with anything because it's not a Zoom. It's like on the website. But I don't know if that would be helpful or not. And then again, it's only three students, so I just about. It's just my thought.
Mr. Campbell on the way in.
Mr. Campbell?
So Josh brings up a very valid point. If they, the students are struggling. We did have an applicant who was interested in only working virtually. And she said if our students did struggle, she would be willing to help the school system. So I will reach back out to her now that I know that we are having problems connecting with the teacher that's supposed to be available online.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I just want to add that the I think this is the beginning. Mr. Campbell and I already had a little conversation. This is a really challenging issue, and it's something that we're going to have to face as a school committee and as a school system moving forward is we have a lot of these and you've already faced it. The school committee has already faced. You have these programs that are, we A can't get staff for or they're under enrolled and in French is clearly one of those areas that are under enrolled. I think our my preference as a superintendent is to be able to offer more than one language at the at the high school level. But that has ramifications for how it's. It's no different whether you're building a sports program or an academic program. There have to be some supports beyond that, and it's a little premature. I'm not trying to avoid this. This, we're looking at a possible short term solution. And I applaud Mr. Campbell for looking, reaching out to different schools to look at different options for the students that are in these classes now. And I disagree with Josh, and I mean this in the nicest way. I think you articulated your situation very well. And that would never say, Mr. Campbell would never say it's just three kids. So nobody's saying, so what? We certainly would do whatever we can to make every experience for every kid to be as as positive and fulfilling as possible. And we'll continue to do that. But at some point, this committee in in including Mr. Campbell, Mr. Stones, and we're going to have to, and probably Mrs. Chris, will have to have a conversation about if, you know, what's our commitment to these types of programs and what's it going to take? And I'll be totally blunt with you. It will. It's always going to be a bit hit and miss at the high school with these with languages, as long as you're not supporting them at the middle school and you're not giving kids language experiences prior to getting to the high school. It's it's just not a good way to build a program. And but that's, again, what's a program, it's a conversation we need to have. So it's really funny. On one hand, I'm telling you about all this money we're not going to have. And then I'm telling you about these, you know, things, what we need to do to build programs. I don't know. That's why we have to work on it together because it's it's a tough. It's a tough ask.
Mr. Campbell?
So just one more thing. I mean, we do have students who are enrolled in French one, French two, and French three online. So I will make sure I follow up with those students to make sure they're not in the same boat with the students who are doing the upper level French.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Oh, Mr. Mr. Danda Welly?
Sorry, I just I just had one more kind of comment. Obviously, like, we're presented with very different types of situations every year and with like our budgets and whatnot. And obviously, the school involvement is very like student involvement in this, like in each program is a big part of whether we keep it or not. But just personally, I feel like having those programs to offer to students is kind of like what makes our, like, I guess, the winter culture so great. I know plenty of like people who kind of moved here because of like the grade and like the rating that we have and around like the school. And like the rating that comes goes into that is how many languages we offer, what our food is like, our diversity, our grades, our teachers. And I just, I would hate to see like, maybe like other students not moving in because maybe there's other programs offered at a different school. I just personally think that like, I don't want to see another language go kind of like Latin. This is personally.
Thank you.
Well said.
Okay, moving right on along then. I have no chair report. Standing committee reports, finance, Mr. Whoa.
Do you have? Oh, I'm sorry. Let me look at the agenda real quickly. Is there a report? For no, no, I noticed that Nan Bell is on.
Yeah, she's coming up.
Sorry, my bad. I'm sorry.
So we'll move on along. Standing committee reports, Ms. Dykett, finance, please.
Yes, we have a couple of warrants.
Can you? Can you speak up?
Yeah, can you hear me?
No, not very well. What happened to your mic?
Sign language.
Oh, no. I don't know what happened to you, Jana.
I will type it.
Oh, you said it. You're good.
Here it is. Set it now? Okay.
Well, just you really have to yell.
All right, wait a minute. Prefere is trying to fix this, but I can't move it.
Did the cat walk on your keyboard between the last time you spoke and now?
No. I will say it and then I will. I'm going to send these to Colleen anyways. But for warrants, we finished up a couple that before the auditor came in, twenty six E and twenty six F. We're going to go back in on Friday and do some more. But that's all we have done for now.
We thank you for that, and I know you're going to send it to Colleen if you haven't already. Right. Thank you, both you and Sue for doing those warrants. Policy Committee, you're going to be hearing from them in a few minutes. But they did meet before this meeting tonight. Negotiations, Ms. Jamway?
None at this time.
And nothing for curriculum and nothing for renovation, new construction and and grade school maintenance at this time. So moving on along on the agenda to Roman numeral three. We have FY twenty one Elementary and Secondary Education Act of sixty five, which was the war on poverty at that time. I was there back then with President Johnson. But we're going to have an overview of that and the projects that are funded from Ms. White.
Hi, folks. So in your packet, there was some paperwork kind of going over some of the district and school specific projects that we're looking to fund through our title application this year. And so I just thought I'd give you some more information about each of those individual projects moving forward. And then we can open it for public comment for the next couple of days. So the district projects that we're looking at there, one of them is the homeless foster care project. And those funds go to supplement the stipend for the homeless liaison for the district and some additional costs that go with that specific position, along with some monies to actually support the identified students who are serviced by the homeless liaison. So that's some of the details for the homeless and foster care project. Under that is our professional evaluation and growth system here at the school or across the district, excuse me. And those Title V funds fund our I Observation License, which is the interface that our staff and administrators use. It also pays for our Western Maine Educational Collaborative Dues, which is a professional community that we join, share a lot of information with. And they helped set up the event that we were going to be attending last year as a district for professional development for the entire faculty. Another piece of that, as Mr. Hodgkins mentioned earlier, is that we're working closely with Kurt Jack this year as a consultant. And that support also falls underneath this P P A G professional development and support line. Underneath that, some funds from the Title II A go to supplement the position for Director of Teaching and Learning as that supports the professional development also for our teachers in the district. And so some of those funds are allocated for that. And those are the the main district projects. We have a school specific projects at the grade school. And this is our Title I A team leader who runs the learning lab and the additional learning lab staffing at the grade school. And the staffing is one teacher there. There's also an Ed Tech three, and this year there's a long term sub in that space also. It also funds the Title I A Family Involvement Team, which puts on monthly events for families of students that are involved in the one A program or the learning lab program, excuse me, to kind of get them involved because we know that research points in the direction of more family involvement, more success in our buildings. And so that some of those funds go to that. And then the final piece at the grade school is the Star Plus Program, which is the summer school program, which also is available to students who are targeted. And that runs about seven weeks. It staffs a couple of teachers and there's some specific homework assessments, excuse me, assignments that go in that, and it's voluntary for families to be involved in if they're interested. And so that puts our total S sub project proposal at two hundred and fifty three thousand three hundred and thirteen, which is actually less than we've had last year. So it's down about eleven thousand, specifically eleven thousand three hundred and fifty two. So it's a little bit less funding than we had last year. And that's kind of a trend over the last couple of years is that we've been receiving fewer and fewer funds through our S allocations.
Thank you very much, Ms. White.
Welcome.
Any questions for Mrs. White? You're, you're off the hook, just like that. Thank you. Well, for, for this section, anyway.
Did you, did, I'm, I'm sorry, I missed the very end, because I was a little distracted. But did you mention that the comment period goes until October 9th?
It did initially, but yes, it does. And the paperwork is posted on the website. And so...
Awesome.
Now, I don't know. I've sort of searched, um, our participants. And I don't know that I saw that Ms. Bell was on here.
I am.
Oh, okay, there you are. Okay, well, let me, let me do a, um, a formal introduction. Um, and then you can help me out with the introduction, um, Mrs. Bell. So, Mrs. Bell is the Let's Go 5210 Program for Healthy Communities of the Capital Area. And she's here to say some nice things. I, I think so. You're restricted to just nice things, Ms. Bell.
Okay, there you go. Uh, thank you, Ms. Guyer. And I, uh, I think Erin, Erin Weeks is gonna join me in speaking to you. Um, and I don't know if you have to unmute her, or she, oh, she can unmute herself, I guess. Erin, are you there?
I'm here. I don't have video for some reason, but I'm here.
Oh, good. Okay. Well, I'll start us off. And, um, thank you for including, uh, us on the, uh, Let's Go on your agenda this evening. I'm Nan Bell, as, uh, Ms. Guyer said. And I work at Healthy Communities of the Capital Area, which is actually a nonprofit, um, that houses public health programs about tobacco prevention, substance abuse prevention. Um, and that includes vaping, marijuana, and alcohol. Um, and we also do nutrition and physical activity programs, such as the SNAP Ed Program, Let's Go, that I'm gonna speak to you about tonight, Farm to School, and we have a youth empowerment program. Um, our programs are grant-funded. And, um, I've been working at Healthy Communities for the last four years as the Let's Go Coordinator for Southern Kennebec County. And Winthrop Schools, I'm, I'm pleased to say, has been a part of the Let's Go program for, um, for four years now. And, uh, and Let's Go program, for those of you who might not be familiar with it, is a statewide child obesity prevention program that works with childcare programs, after-school programs, schools, uh, and school nutrition programs to increase healthy eating, physical activity, uh, opportunities for children. Um, the program is based on the 5210 message, which is five fruits and vegetables every day, two hours or less of screen time, recreational screen time, that is, um, one hour or more of physical activity, and zero sugary drinks. So, um, I wanted to come tonight to talk to you about the fact that because Let, uh, Winthrop Schools have been participating with the Let's Go program for the last four years, we do recognition every year of us, of, uh, the achievements and, uh, celebrate the, uh, actual work that's being done in schools. And, um, this year, all three of your district cafeteria, cafeterias and their staff were recognized by the Let's Go program. Um, and so what that means is that, uh, your school lunchrooms are implementing the best practices, uh, that reduce waste and increase participation. Um, many of these low-to-no-cost environmental changes help, uh, students, uh, to make healthier choices. Um, reaching this status is no easy task. And I know, because I've been working with, uh, I actually worked with your previous, uh, nutrition director, and now working with Erin Weeks, uh, for the last couple of years to establish the Let's Go messaging, um, and do what we call, uh, smarter lunchroom scorecards, where, uh, kitchen staff assess, uh, their cafeterias as to what they're doing, um, in the cafeterias. And some of the focus, uh, some of the areas of focus that, that, that the staff are looking at is focusing on fruit, varying the vegetables that are offered to students, highlighting the salad bar, which we'll hear a little bit more about that from Erin this year, um, moving more white milk, um, boosting reimbursable meals, the lunchroom atmosphere, uh, student involvement, and school community involvement. So what this is saying, this assessment, um, that the, the staff are doing, um, they sort of score themselves on that, to say, you know, how much of this are we doing and how much aren't we? Well, um, it, in the recognition, um, the way they gather this information at the Let's Go home office is by asking, uh, these, uh, the kitchen staff to take a survey, an annual survey, where they check in as to what they are doing in their, what they're presently doing in their, uh, in their cafeterias. That's where the recognition comes in. And the grade school, um, achieved gold recognition. And the high school and middle school achieved silver recognition, according to the program, which means that, um, they are implementing best practices, um, in a, in a higher range, um, is, uh, as opposed to those schools that maybe aren't participating. So it's, um, the Let's Go program is, is designed to make environmental change and change behavioral habits in a positive manner. So what this is saying is that, um, your, your district-wide kitchen, cafeteria staff have been working hard to, um, to implement these ideas in their environment, which is helping students to make a healthy choice, an easy choice, every day that they're eating at school. So I wanted to ask Erin if she can speak a little bit about what, uh, what she's done. Um, she, she, we were talking the other day. She gave me a nice example of how she made it user-friendly for students. So Erin, would you, um, jump in?
Well, first of all, I want to acknowledge that this year is a little bit different because of COVID and how we're serving the students. But when I came on board last year, the first thing I implemented in the grade school was a selection of fresh fruits at the door when the students arrived in the cafeteria. So rather than, you know, grabbing their milk and going and getting their food, and then thinking about, you know, going and getting their, their entree, and then thinking about fruits and vegetables, they are greeted with three or four bowls of colorful, fresh, uh, fruits, locally grown whenever it's possible. So we, we do participate in the Farm to School program and the Harvest of the Month program. So the kids come in in September and October and see local apples and pears and anything else that we can get our hands on. And they're, they're selecting that first when they're hungry. Then they were getting their entree, um, from the cafeteria serving line and being checked out by the cashier. After that, they went to, uh, what we promoted as a free salad bar. In other words, it didn't affect whether their meal was reimbursable or not, or how much they took. It was, kids could go to the salad bar and take whatever they wanted. So if they only wanted one cucumber and one tomato and one celery stick, they could take it. And we were promoting all kinds of different fresh vegetables. We had, um, snow peas and green pepper and red pepper strips, different things, so that the kids could, could just go and try a little bit if they weren't familiar with it. And we found that instead of forcing them to take a portion, which is, um, three-quarters of a cup of vegetable, um, we were, we're allowing them to pick and choose what they wanted after they already had a reimbursable meal. A reimbursable meal requires that they have a fruit or a vegetable. And by walking in the door and grabbing their fruit first, we were sort of training the grade school kids that, that the fresh fruit is what you have first before, you know, when you're hungry, that's the go-to snack. And then we didn't have to worry about the vegetable counting as a reimbursable. And even a student who brought their lunch from home could go up and get some salad from the salad bar if they wanted. So the free salad bar concept was to encourage kids to have those vegetables whenever they wanted to.
So that's, that's a little different this year, though, um, Erin. And, um, I was interested in hearing, um, how you said, you're, you're, um, this year, because of the COVID, uh, COVID protocol, that rather than offering food to students in, uh, in the lunchroom, um, you're actually serving them. So could you talk a little bit about what that means?
Well, in the grade school, in the middle school, our staff have carts full of fruit, food. And they go up and down the aisles of desks and offer the children all the different options. Um, and I've had to do this a couple of times when we were shorthanded. And so we ask them what kind of a sandwich they want, or a hot entree that they want. And then we have fresh fruits and vegetables on our cart. You know, we might have apples or bananas or pears and, um, broccoli and cauliflower, celery sticks, carrot sticks, slices of cucumber. And we show the children, and they're, they're wrapped in clear wrapping, so that they're, you know, staying clean and, um, not exposed to any germs from anyone. So they can see through the, the plastic wrapping, the, you know, beautiful fresh vegetables. And they can either take a vegetable and a fruit, or both if they want. So we're offering this sort of, um, like a stewardess on an airplane, for a lack of a better comparison, because we're going up and down the aisles of the already seated children, so that they're keeping their distance from each other, but still seeing a selection of fresh fruits and vegetables available to them.
Thanks, Erin. Um, and, and I, I was really excited when I talked with Erin to learn this the other day, because it's clear that, um, that, uh, they, they're doing an incredible job, given the circumstances with COVID. Um, and still creating that healthy environment where kids are, um, able to make a healthy choice around eating at school. Um, the other thing Erin and I talked about, and I've, I've heard this in other districts, is that, um, the eligibility for free lunch is open to all this year. And I, I believe it's open until December. Um, and Erin, I, I, I had mentioned that, uh, the, their numbers are low. Uh, students, uh, students aren't taking advantage of this. And do you want to say anything about that, Erin?
We're seeing a higher-than-normal, um, number of students bringing their lunches from home. And we're not really sure why, if, um, parents are afraid that we're not being careful in our kitchens, or they're afraid the kids won't like the selection we have. I know we did have some complaints in September, because we started off with only cold food. But as of October 1st, we're serving hot entrees as well. Um, we, you know, it does present some different challenges to us, where we prepackage everything. Um, but we still do not see the participation that we had previously in the grade school. We would have, um, nearly 300 students a, a day getting school lunch. And we're down to about 100 or 120. And the other two schools, um, we have about 50% participation of what we normally have. And even in the high school, um, we're aware that one of the issues is juniors and seniors with privileges can leave campus. But they could leave campus with a free lunch in hand if they so choose. There's no reason why they can't participate in this free program. It is free to every, every child in the area, 18 years and younger. So even students who are not in school, uh, remote learners, students who are, um, homeschooled, anyone can come in and get free food. And we're just a little bit perplexed as to why there are not more participating in this. The remote, um, school program is, um, available for pickup at the high school four days a week. They can get breakfast and lunch for their children. And, um, even though we have about 124 students remote, we're having, uh, two students participate in this program. So we'd really like to see a lot more people, um, see that they can get, and again, it's, you know, it's sandwiches. Some days, it's a cold sandwich. Some days, it's, uh, a meal that could be warmed up. It's breakfast, it's milk, it's fresh fruits and vegetables. And we'd really like to expand this program. We have the staff, we have the space, we have the ability to, to feed more of Winthrop students if they only participate.
Erin, do you post your menus? Uh, and, and if you do, where, where do you post them?
It's on the district website, and it's on the grade school website. Um, we post a daily menu in the high school on a, on a, um, uh, erase board and in the middle school on a chalkboard. Um, and it's announced on the loudspeaker also in the middle school. Um, the teachers in the grade school know the options. They ask the children in the morning what they'd like for lunch. But it is available. And also, the information is on the district website on how to participate, um, meals for remote learners. And I just want to reiterate that a family that is, has their children at home, even if their children are under the age of five, they qualify for this free program.
Wow. Wow, that's amazing.
Well, thanks, Erin. And I, I, I will, I will just say that there are other districts that I work with that are facing similar dilemmas. Um, they're trying to get the, nutrition directors are trying to get the word out that, um, this program has been extended. Um, and it, as far as we know, I guess it'll go till December. So, um, maybe word of mouth, and, um, just, uh, reemphasizing it on your website, too, uh, to get, to get folks involved, to get families to know that they can participate. But I will finish up by saying, this is a, a stellar example of, um, the good work that's happening at, uh, Winthrop Schools, um, in all the lunchrooms. And I think that, um, it's, uh, exciting that, uh, that your lunchrooms have been recognized. Uh, your schools are also part of this recognition program. And they, uh, they too participated in the survey. Um, and they are working on, um, the Let's Go messaging at the, at, with their school champions at each of the three schools. And, um, I actually connect with them through your district wellness committee, which I contacted Mr. Hodgkins. And he let me know that, um, Megan White is now, um, the person I need to, to contact, uh, to, um, get those, uh, the wellness team back up and running. So I will be reaching out to Meg White again, because I was working with your district wellness team last year. And, um, they were, they were making great progress. They had some real goals that they wanted to work on. So, um, thank you and congratulations, Winthrop, for, uh, for the good work that you're doing to promote a healthy school community for your kids and for their future as well.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. And I think, um, speaking for the school committee, although they're more than capable of speaking for themselves, and I suspect they may, we, we, um, we have said before, but I just want to say publicly again, that we consider Erin Weeks to be a rock star. And we feel incredibly fortunate to have her. And I really would appreciate it if, um, Ms. Weeks, if you would, take the compliments and congratulations of the school board to all of your employees as well. A job very well done, and we certainly do appreciate it. I do believe, Ms. Weeks, that you gave Josh, uh, Danda Whaley, put him in charge of increasing, uh, high school participation. I don't know. Have you, have you not been doing your job, Josh?
I did an, I did an announcement, but I think I'll, I'll, I'll do it tomorrow, too. I, I have fun, I have fun saying the announcement. It's, it's a pretty, I don't know, I think Ms. Weeks wrote it, but it was, it was pretty good.
Well, I think you have to step up your efforts. And maybe now you can get Ms. Groob to help you.
Oh, yeah.
Just so you know, next week, we're gonna start, um, peddling food in the lobby when the juniors and seniors leave for lunch. I'm gonna be out there with my broadcaster's voice and, you know, trying to get them to take a free sandwich with them before they go. Rather than going and spending their money at Subway and Winthrop House of Pizza, we're gonna try to get them to get their food in the high school.
Great. Next, we'll hear that you've been tackling them as they go out the door.
That's a possibility.
Any other comments from school committee people? Ms. Shumway?
Congratulations, um, Erin, for all of your, your accolades and your hard work and... Congratulations, Erin, for all of your your accolades and your hard work and creativity around making lunch work in these bizarre times. One suggestion that I have mentioned to the superintendent before about overall communication that I think might help you in getting the word out more often and more actively would be perhaps using a notification system like our town has started using for meetings and so on and so forth. And I don't know exactly what they are using. And I mentioned to the superintendent to ask our town manager what exactly that system was, and if it was something that the school district could begin using to regularly communicate with its parents. And essentially, what it is is you sign up and determine what you'd like notifications on. So if parents would like to be notified about the school calendar, I mean, about the the meal meal menu, that when that gets posted on the website, a notification goes to their phone or their email account. And so I know that as parents, and I am terrible at this, is that I often don't check our district website, even though I know it has a plethora of information. So it might be something that wouldn't be more work necessarily for you once the system was up and running, that parents who are interested in getting those menus sent to their email accounts or their phones when it's posted, it just seems like that it would just be another level of communication and and having them encourage their children to perhaps have a lunch option at school rather than packing lunch.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Bell, thank you so much for doing that presentation and it's very informative.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. It's nice to see you.
It's quite a pleasure. Okay, moving on along to old business, Roman numeral four. I'll entertain a motion to accept for first reading the revisions to policy IKB homework policy as recommended by the homework committee.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain right now, public comment. If any folks out there in the public would like to type a comment in the in the group chat that would help inform the school committee as they ponder whether or not to accept this homework policy, please do it now. And Ms. Bells, do you want to lead a quick discussion on that? Or how do you feel? I know that our policy meeting was broken up because I had to leave, but so.
I guess basically what we discussed was the revisions to the policy made it more flexible. And there was, Mrs. Shumway was on the committee that it was based on a book that they read. And there was much discussion and a lot of feedback from many different parts of the community. And they what they really wanted to focus on was that homework gave feedback to the kids. Hang on, I'm checking my notes here. So yes, that was a highlight was that it was going to be feedback to the kids and the work that they were learning. And I'm happy to have Mrs. White add anything if I didn't cover something.
I think you did a good job, Ms. Bells. I was not on the committee last year. It was worked on before I was in this position. But the feedback I met with someone who was on the committee, I believe Mr. Danda Whaley was also on that committee as a student representative. And so it was centered around some research-based literature, a book called Rethink Homework. And that kind of guided some of their discussions around the purpose and use of homework and how we wanted that to look for our district.
Thank you, Ms. White. Mr. Danda Whaley, any additional comments?
I don't know. I liked what we did or I know what we talked about. I think it's true. Personally, I still get homework. And I think it just depends on the rigor, the rigor is classes kids take, you know. So personally, I think throughout my high school career, it's been my homework's been pretty meaningful and it has given me feedback. I think Ms. White, just putting her on the spot, she was like one of the best teachers that I had for homework. She like everything we did was very meaningful. And I think I find that with a lot of my teachers. I think the description that we that was written is very accurate. And I like it. And it's definitely less wordy.
It definitely is less wordy. Ms. Shumway, you were our student, you were our school committee liaison to the committee. Do you have anything to add? You don't have to.
Yes. No, I think it's a couple of things that are really important to emphasize is that in the end, the committee came up with the idea that homework needed to be purposeful and that it wasn't just to assign homework and to create this illusion of rigor around classes, that if a teacher assigned it homework, that it meant the class was hard. But having it be meaningful and that and we had a lot of discussion about whether we should have a policy of no homework at all. And teachers such as English teachers with writing felt that you couldn't accomplish everything within class time and that you needed to have assignments at home in order for students to develop their work. So that is why we came up with a with a homework policy that didn't have any set time like it did before as to what grade level expectations were for time, but that it needed to be purposeful. And we defined that in the policy and the new policy. Also should be emphasized, and I know that this was not able to happen at the beginning of the year with all of the COVID protocols and changes with that. But we emphasized at the committee that we needed professional development around what purposeful homework looked like, so that all of our teachers were familiar with what what we meant by that and what purposeful assignments were so that it didn't just become a phrase that was tossed around, but that it actually this policy was enacted in a way that was going to be relevant for our teachers and students.
I think she was looking at you when she said that, Ms. White. You probably had a hard time figuring that out from the gallery view here, but I.
I'm taking notes.
I suspect that was true. And I just have to go back. What a coup there, Superintendent Hodgkins, that now Ms. White is also chair of the of the wellness committee. Wow.
We've only just begun.
It's like you don't think she has anything to do.
She doesn't.
Oh, my goodness. Well, I'd go and hide pretty soon, Mrs. White, I think. Any anything else on that before we're ready to vote? Okay, I'll call the roll. Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
I as well. So motion passes for first reading unanimously.
Can you hear me better now?
What's that?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah. What'd you do differently?
My kids taught me how to turn up my mic in a Zoom meeting last week. So I played around with it until I figured out how to do it.
Well, I don't know what happened to it. You were fine at the beginning of the meeting.
I know. I don't know what happened either, but it works now.
Well, I'm glad you fixed it. We'll move on to B. I'll entertain a motion to approve Wednesday as the one-day Student Independent Project Learning Day for the remainder remainder of the 2020-2021 school year, as long as school is designated green or yellow.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And we'll open it up for a discussion. Who wants to start with that discussion? Is it Mrs. White or Ms. Bells or Mr. Hodgkin?
Yeah.
Oh, no, I didn't know you were going to present, present. So you may already answer my question. So I'll let you go.
I think I think that one of them has a, oh, what's the word I'm looking for, rationale for this motion?
Yeah, this is, this could be very lengthy. First, I have over four pages of notes in front of me here. I tried to to knock down a few bullet points.
Remember my age, please?
Yes, I will do that. But I think the the big thing is there's this, you know, we keep talking about that this is unprecedented times. And I, first of all, want to say that I'm just so pleased with the decision that the committee made. I really believe that we are the only school that I'm aware of that is doing school the way we're doing it, which is essentially having all of our kids in school 80% of the week. And that allows our parents to, you know, I know there's still some glitches with that, but to be back to work for the most part. And but also, and this is the part that I'm going to spend the most of my time talking about, acknowledges the hard work and time that is necessary to do to do quality work that our teachers put in. And so what I asked when we when we talked about this is at the back, at the back to school committee meeting, I asked the administrators to go back and talk to their staffs about, it was it was beyond unanimous if there's such a thing, that people felt like we should. And the value of this day for a number of reasons, and that's what I want to talk about, is is undisputed among the professional staff. The, you know, and some of the things are, I think there's there's a misperception out there that if the school, the students are only in school 80% of the time, that the teachers are doing only 80% of the work. And nothing could be further from the truth. They're working way harder, under a great deal more stress, because in addition to the stress of trying to do a quality job with education, they have the stress that every other person who's working during this time, this close to students, this close to to each other, has about fear of getting sick themselves. So but, you know, some of the things that this Wednesday, the Wednesday day has shown us that we didn't even know. And I kept saying, you know, people were sick of hearing me say, you know, we're not going to know until, we're not going to know until. We still don't have all the answers. But I'm gonna let Megan talk a little bit in a second, because she's been the one, my greatest source of information about what she what the teachers are learning, what she's learning from talking to the remote parents, what she's talking, what she's learning from talking to the teachers, and what I'm what I'm learning, talking to the principals and the teachers. And it's, you know, the, some of the points I'm just going to go through here, some of them are said multiple times. So I'm just going to say them once. Common team time. On Wednesdays, we said that the Wednesdays were going to be about process and planning. And until we started doing this, we didn't know what we didn't know. And we still don't know of all the answers. We're still working bugs out every day with our remote learners and making those connections with our in-person teachers. At the grade school, where we've been fortunate to have three teachers who do just the remote learners and all the rest of the teachers are doing in person, there still needs to be some coordination, a great deal of coordination in order for the education to be as equitable as possible. So Wednesdays are the days that those in-person teachers and the remote teachers work together to make sure they are planning and delivering instruction as seamlessly as possible. It's and I mean to say it that way. The intention intention is for it to be seamless. It's not seamless yet. But I it will be over a period of time because of because we have this this gift of this professional development day. We continue to talk about, and again, Megan goes around and talks to the the staffs. She she'll tell you her Wednesdays are just nutso. And I go around on Wednesdays, and while particularly start with the high school, and talk about that our teachers, even our in-person teachers are practicing how to teach students in a red under red conditions or yellow conditions. And that's important because we don't, when students are home, and it was an issue when people were upset with how things were last spring, our teachers didn't have to practice. Now, we have people that are doing it, and we're seeing the 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 bugs that go along with trying to get on the app, you know, the apps that are there and and logging in and getting information out, getting information back and all of that exchange. Sounds really simple, but it's very, very, very complicated. Again, I mentioned, we're talking about the the staff have an opportunity and they've been, I've attended a number of the staff meetings on Wednesdays for the different groups of staff that are meeting, talking about lessons learned. What have they learned from from doing things the way they have over the week? When they go on a Thursday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, and then they have that Wednesday, they have the time to meet and talk about process, what they've learned, what's come up, you know, during that time and make the changes that go with that. And most of that still is about ironing out the issues with technology and accessing technology. We still need time when we go yellow and or red to figure out how to do low tech. And that's a time that the staff is going to need to be able to prepare for that. And that's ongoing. That isn't like, I think some people thought that we would just get this and learn how to do it, and then it would just be the end of it. But it's not, you know, we have teachers that are now working 70 hours plus, you know, preparing for their in-person teaching and their remote teach, you know, students as well. And they they do care about the success of their students. And so they are putting in the amount of time they need to make sure. And that's one of the comments that came through loudly a number of times about how committed to doing a great job. And when they get feedback and when when Megan gets feedback from a parent who's unhappy because we haven't quite got it right with them, you know, they work, they take that very seriously. They take it very personally. And they're working their butts off to try to fix things so that it's a quality educational experience for our students. We anticipate this is not going away soon. So we want to be outstanding at it. And and I think certainly under Megan's direction and the work of the building principals, that gets, we're getting better and better at that all the time. The grade school, the younger grade school students still haven't received their Chromebooks. They were supposed to be in last week. I think they're supposed to be in tomorrow, today, Wednesday. But I don't know if that actually happened. We've been hearing they're coming in for a long time. So that's a great deal of of practice, particularly for the for the in-school students. The remote kids in the grade schools all have their devices at home, and they've worked through some of those things. But when you're talking about kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, fifth graders needing to no longer do that person, do that education in person, but to do it from home, they need to, the teachers need to be working with those students in class as if they weren't in class. And that's the practice stuff that needs to happen. And that's a great deal more work than I think most people realize. I already mentioned it allows the road staff and the in-person staff to work together on Wednesdays. We there's, we have common team time right now. Everybody has planning time. And it's not just about having time to plan their own for their own classrooms. It's about, you know, like, third grade teachers all get to meet together and and they can create more consistency in their in what they're delivering for instruction and learn from each other and and figure out the things that are that are necessary. So let me look at some of the other things I highlighted. I heard somebody mention earlier, but I want to reiterate this, that a lot of IEPs and 504 meetings happen on on those Wednesdays, as well as related services, OTPT, Braille, having the Wednesday when the students are available. You know, the smaller number, the ones that have IEPs and 504s, to get their services is exceptionally helpful. It gives time for the staff to communicate with students, particularly students who are struggling. They they answer and deal with countless emails on that day. Time to process with team members with what is working and what needs tweaking or changing. And I could go on and on, but it just, it really has proven to be both responsive, from my perspective, responsive to the students, responsive to the parents in terms of getting their kids in 80% of the time, and responsive to our teachers who are working exceptionally hard. And I want to make sure that we acknowledge how hard they're working. So I'll let somebody else speak for a while.
I guess the first question that comes to mind, what what are the benefits to I guess the first question that comes to mind, what are the benefits to this motion, being a motion that's asking for this day to be kept for the entire year, school year, as opposed to, say, just going to the end of the semester and then reevaluating it and coming back?
Yeah, we talked, actually had a chance to talk about that very specific thing. From my perspective, it's a, I think, I would rather say to the community, we're going to do this for the rest of the year. And instead of creating what I would believe would be a false illusion that we're maybe only going to need to do it for the mid-year. I think the staff would tell you that, I think it's hoping against hope, that everything will be smooth. And so for me, if you want to hope against hope, then I'd say do it this way. Let's say we'll do it till the end of the year. And if everything is wonderful and we find out that our Wednesdays are being used just for people to have extra planning time, then I think we come back and say, no, we'll, you know, we don't need the Wednesdays. But I, that's a hard thing for me to imagine at this point, given how hard our staff is working right now.
Thank you. Well, just let me say before I ask, would the community, if you have any comments, please type them in the comment section right now, and I'll read them as the school committee is deliberating. School committee questions? Ms. Dykett?
So just a couple of questions. First of all, have you heard anything about, from the state, about waiving number of days that students are in seats, or are those counted as remote days? So we don't need to worry about that.
Yeah, that's a great question. We have heard specifically, well, there's an order that's in place until the middle of January that essentially says, that waives all of those expectations. But on top of that, we're also hearing that because we have an expectation that Wednesdays are not a day off, that those do indeed count as student days.
Okay, so that was question number one. Question number two, or comment number two, I should say. So my district just went remote for three days because we had a couple of positive cases. As ready as you think you're going to be, when they flip that switch and you go full remote, your world turns upside down. I'm assuming with, for parents and kids as well, I know kids because I talk to my students. So anxiety shoots up and teachers need time to process. You are so lucky that, or Winterp is so lucky that they have this Wednesday to do that. We don't have that in my district. We teach every day until 2:00, and then we get to do our remote stuff and all of that. So with that being said, I do fully support this because there are still so many things that we don't have in place, we don't know how to do. We're still learning, and it's frustrating to not have the time to do that. I've heard a lot of positive feedback about what's happening in there on Wednesdays. And I applaud the teachers and the staff and the trainings that are going on. It is, I think it is filtering out for the students as well. But it is, you know, when and if Winterp has to go remote, and I liked what you said about it not being seamless. It's not going to be seamless. There are still going to be issues. There's going to be connectivity issues. There's going to be issues with programs working, getting kids hooked up and getting work passed in and passed out through technology that may not necessarily be happening in the classrooms now because you can interact with the kids and have those conversations that you can't necessarily have over Zooms or the Internet or Google Meets or however you are meeting. So keep working at it, and I just, I appreciate the time that staff has given.
Thank you, Ms. Dykett. School committee, anything else? Ms. Shumway?
I just need a clarification, and I don't know if we need to add the clarification to the motion or not. But I know that we kind of throw around the term going red. And I don't know if, when we, if we were to have a situation like Jana's experienced where we need to close down for a couple of days, is that considered red? Or does that red designation come from the governor's office? And so, so is the implication that if we were to go remote for a couple of days, or we had to shut the middle school down like Marana Cook did for two weeks, what happens to that Wednesday day? Are we officially red? Are we still considered green? And so I just want to make sure that if our motion is saying that we're going to keep this day as long as we're designated green or yellow, do we need to make, do we need to clarify under what red conditions that that Wednesday day will become a school day? Am I making any sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. And I understand it, and I know it can be a little complicated in that I think sometimes we make things more complicated than they need to be. And my sense is, when we talked about how to word this motion, and honestly, Chris, and it came after a question that you asked, and I had to give that more thought, that I don't, under red, whether it's red for a day, or red for a week, or red for the rest of the year, I don't see that the Wednesdays would specifically change. Our teachers are already coming in, they're working from school, they, you know, they're not specifically working with students, and I'm not sure they would even under that scenario because it really is about them planning work over, you know, on Monday and Tuesday, you know, that they would do on Wednesday without specific instruction. You don't need to have specific instruction to have that be a student day. So I guess I didn't see, as I was writing the motion, that Wednesdays, whatever, but like I said, whether it's one day or one year, that Wednesdays, as we presently have it structured, would change. The only way it might change is if we get an edict from the governor or the department that said that one day a week, I mean, Auburn, for instance, right now, teachers cannot go in their building on Wednesdays. Cannot. Winterp has made the decision last year that when we, if everybody's teaching remotely, they do it from the school. We stuck with that, except that our three, well, I'd say that we stuck with that. We really haven't, because the three teachers who are teaching remote at grade school couldn't physically, and they were out because of medical reasons, which I believe, if I, and I wasn't here when you made that determination as a committee, but it really was, unless you had a medical reason, you were expected to do your work from school. I support that. I think the staff supports that, and I don't see that we would have to change the motion to do that. But Chris, I want to specifically answer your question, though. Red is really, it's a designation two ways. The CDC will determine if we go red. If we, and that's, from my perspective, that's what I'd say. We, red could be one day, red could be three days, red could be two weeks, you know. We just found out tonight, while I was on a Zoom, that it was communicated to me, Skowhegan, which was gearing up to go to five days. And I'd had the conversation with this superintendent, I couldn't believe they were doing that, it's such a big district. They now have had positive cases and they're going red. I don't know for how long, but so it just is, it happens in a blink of an eye.
Yeah.
So I think, just to clarify, what I think Ms. Shumway is asking, is if we, if our middle school went remote for Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, because we had one student and we quarantined them, but we were going to start again on Friday, it could be assumed then by all of the community that that Wednesday would still be a day where the teachers would have an opportunity to work together?
Yeah.
That's not what our motion says.
Yeah, I think it does.
Well, that's why I just want to make sure that.
Because our motion says designated green or yellow, that this will remain a one-day Student Independent Project Learning Day as long as the school is designated green or yellow. And I know that I had asked for that because I felt like if we were going remote, that, and the students were 100% remote and not coming into school, that the remote plan that we've been using this Wednesday for would be enacted, and there wouldn't be a need for that Wednesday day anymore. And then I had asked for a questionnaire to go home to parents, which I didn't see. So I started asking parents if flip-flopping back and forth and having this kind of open-ended Wednesday project day, rather than just having it for the rest of the school year, what kind of problems that would create? And the question was brought up, well, what does it mean to go red? What if we go red for a day? What if we go red for two weeks? Or if we go red for the rest of the school year, does that change our Wednesday day? And to me, the way that I read this motion is that if we go red, Wednesday is a remote learning day. That means that teachers will be teaching on Wednesday remotely.
I don't know why you think that. It doesn't, there's no suggestion of changing Wednesday in the motion.
Yes, it does. It says that it will remain Wednesdays as the one-day Student Independent Project Learning Day for the remainder of the school year, as long as the school is designated green or yellow. So if our students are in-person green and a hybrid yellow, then that one-day Student Independent Project Learning Day will remain. But then if you go red, is it Monday through Friday now remote teaching and remote learning? That's how I'm interpreting it. That's why I asked for clarification.
I wonder if it could be fixed if you just get rid of as long as school is designated green or yellow?
Well, that was my original motion, but I made the change after the input from school committee. I said we didn't do a survey, and I thought I had explained that. I'm happy to explain it to everybody that, you know, I think, basically, we were saying to parents, you want your kids to go four days or five days? I think it's just, I don't, I don't think we need a survey to understand that most parents would say, yeah, we prefer our kids to be in school five days, not four. And then I was asked, as I was processing that, do we want to survey our staff to see what they think about not having the fifth day, the Wednesday, as a process and planning day? And again, there's no real need to go through the process during a survey to know the results. The results would be 100%. I don't think we have any staff that would say they would, that they don't have a need for the Wednesday. So I think it's, you know, we, we have, we already know the information.
I think that, how would it be, Ms. Shumway, if we just deleted that part where it says, as long as school is designated green or yellow?
Well, and I guess my problem with this is that I don't know what the remote, what our remote learning structure is going to look like. Because for me, when I think of a red designation and going to remote teaching and remote learning for our students, my impression is that the school day would happen and teachers and students would be meeting via a Zoom-type or a Google Meets-type platform during their school day. And if we have that happening Monday and Tuesday, then why couldn't that continue to happen on Wednesday? Like, why would we now need to then have this random independent learning day on Wednesday if we're remote? And so that was why I originally brought it up, saying, well, let's continue this then as long as it was green or yellow. So my second part of that is the reason why I wanted parents questioned, and the question was not whether they wanted their students to go four days or five days. It was more for parents that needed to make arrangements for their students on Wednesday. Because we originally said that this was going to happen until November, that parents possibly made arrangements for their students to have childcare by a family member perhaps, until November 6. And then the idea was that they were going to go back to school on those Wednesdays. So I wanted to know if students remained at home on Wednesdays, what kind of problem that would create for them, if any? And I would have liked to have had that input in order to make this decision.
I respectfully disagree.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, please. Ms. Shumway, I have to disagree with you. We okayed the Wednesday work until November, where it was going to be reevaluated. There was not, it was not going to be terminated. So it was going to be reevaluated, you know, prior to that time, to decide if we needed to continue it or not. So I need to hear a possible fix for this motion. Ms. Shumway, do you have a possible fix for this motion? Or will you vote it down no matter what? Will you be opposing it? Ms. Dykett?
Do you read the comment?
Say again? I will, I will read the comment.
Okay.
Is that, you were just reminding me?
Well, no, because it addresses Wednesdays for remote learners.
Yep, I will read it. I was just giving school committee, but I'll read it. Our remote, this is from Ms. Fitzgerald. Our remote teachers at the grade school have expressed that Wednesdays are vital and essential for them to be able to keep up with the tremendous amount of work it takes to prepare and implement lessons and communications online. Between training students and parents on technology and working with grade-level teams and so much more than I can type in here, Wednesdays are essential, even if we are red or remote. Mr. Petrowski?
So for purposes of discussion, I'd make the motion to amend, I'd make, yeah, the motion to amend what we were presented, so that everything after school year, in the second sentence, it would be a period after school year, 2020, 21 school year period. And the remainder, as long as the school is designated green or yellow, really has nothing to do with this, and I just strike the rest of it.
Do I hear a second on the amendment motion?
Can you maybe reread it as?
The amendment that Mr. Petrowski is suggesting would adjust the motion so that the last several words would be deleted, so that the motion would read instead, "Motion to approve Wednesdays as the one-day Student Independent Project Learning Day for the remainder of the 2020-2021 school year."
Thank you. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on simply the amendment?
Just another clarification. So if the COVID, if the CDC state regulations around COVID go away, let's just be hopeful. And they go away at some point, in some point in the 2021 school year, let's say April, does this get revisited? Because our motion doesn't say anything about that, that this is only while these COVID regulations, like all of the PPE, et cetera, the distancing, et cetera, while all of those things are going on. Because right now, this is just saying that for the 2021 school year, Wednesdays is a one-day Independent Project Learning Day.
And I think that Chairperson Guyer asked me that question, and that was my response. Instead of, we do have some options. We can say, will we revisit this again at the end of the semester, which I think is, I think is a bad idea. I would 100% agree that if the state, essentially, through some miracle, there's no more restrictions and school is allowed to return five days a week with little or no restrictions, then I would certainly see that we would come back to the school committee and say, let's just vote to return to school with whatever we need, whatever way we need to do it. let's just vote to return to school with whatever we need, whatever way we need to do it.
I need a couple of words that will just a few words that will help fence that in a little bit so that it, it's not automatically continuing forever, no matter what the COVID situation is.
Can I, can I ask a question to Ms. Shumway? Ms. Shumway, would you feel better if there was, if, if it did say something to the effect of through the second quarter or through the first semester? Would that make you feel better?
I think for me, because I most likely will not be on the committee any longer when this comes forth. You know, when this, this end of COVID regulations, that I just, I feel like that by making Wednesdays an independent project learning day while it's imperative under these circumstances, it's a huge policy change from instruct, from the way that the district provides instruction. We had talked about doing a PD day on Wednesdays last year, and our community completely shot it down. So I don't want this to become this kind of like backdoor way that we've changed our school year and our school and the way that education is, is brought to our students. So I don't want anyone to, when reading this in the COVID circumstances, it makes sense. But if you take it independent from that, it makes it, it makes it seem like that this one day, this Wednesday is going to be a remote day for students regardless of the COVID situation. So if everyone that's going to continue to be on the committee feels comfortable that, you know, things would be able to go back to normal the way that this is written, then I'll leave that up to you. But for me, I always like to have things very clear and spelled out.
Try this one on for size. I, I need some help with the wording though. And I would add then, while operating under COVID-19 emergency proclamation. I don't know if that emergency proclamation is, is correct. Anybody help me with that? Is that what we're operating under now, Superintendent Hodgkin?
Yes, I guess.
Is that accurate phraseology? I don't know.
I guess it is. I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm really at a loss for trying to find the perfect words that is going to cover every possible scenario as if we have any idea what's coming down the road. I, I, it's unimaginable to me that we want to try to create whatever. It's, it's, you know, that's what school committees do. That's why you meet on a regular basis. You, you, you make the best decisions with the best information you have in front of you right now. And if circumstances change, then we come back and we change it. We can even have emergency meetings and, and do that. I, I'm just going to say, this is the last thing that I would like to say on, on this matter is, this plan is responsive to everybody. And I, I can't, I guess I would just say, I can't imagine for the foreseeable future that we would think about going five days a week. And while that might be better for our community, our parents, no doubt about it. It's not best for our professionals who are working with our kids every single day. So our plan is responsive to the students, getting them to school 80%, not 40%, 80% of the time, getting our, our, freeing up our parents to go back to, to their jobs, which is what, you know, a goal of everybody's. And is responsive, I think we're the only system really that is paying attention to how to be responsive to our professionals who are teaching our kids. So I, I, I don't really care how it gets worded. Initially, what Joe just proposed is what I had originally written. And so it's, it's, it is certainly under COVID times. I, I, I think we're kidding ourselves if we can put that language in. But I think the chances, maybe Dr. McConnell, I don't want to put her on the spot, I always do. But, you know, that, that we're going to be, it's going to look any different in March, April, May. I, you know, I, I'm certainly not in a position to take any guesses at that.
No, I, I, I don't think that you hear from the board any dissent about giving our teachers the, the PPD, the professional PD, there we go, development that they need. All I hear from people in order to get this motion passed is that it just has to be tightened up a little bit. And I can try to accommodate that. So that's, that's all I'm hearing. I, I see that Dr. McConnell, you came on board ready to talk. I, I don't, I, I agree with the superintendent is that I've not heard any medical professional say that there's a chance that we would be out of this before the middle of next summer.
I don't really need to say anything, but I don't understand. There's so many things that are going to have to be revisited. Like people you've hired for the pandemic, like extra bus runs, you know, all kinds of stuff. So why can't it simply say when the pandemic is over, it'll be revisited? Just like sports will be revisited? I mean, graduations, proms.
Probably has to do with just definition.
Yeah. So, I mean, I, I understand that you don't want a backdoor way in because teachers are always trying to get out of stuff. I'm being sarcastic. But I understand that you also want to have some perimeters. But everything we're doing right now is going to have to be revisited. This is just a really, really crappy time, and I think we're making it too complicated.
Right. I agree.
Thank you. So we can, this is how I would propose to proceed from here, school committee. We have an amendment on the floor right now that we need to either discuss that amendment further or call for the vote on that. We can go ahead and amend that, that motion further to include verbiage that I just threw out there that says something along the line of continuing under, until COVID-19 emergency proclamations are rescinded, something like that, or not. So I, I would ask that we go ahead and vote on Mr. Petrowski's amendment that, and I've read that already. I'm happy to do it again if you'd like me to. And then if anyone would like to suggest another amendment, Kristin, if you would like to suggest another amendment that would tighten that up such as the one that I suggested, please do so afterward, and we'll try to get this motion passed. That work? Okay. So I'm going to call for the vote then on Mr. Petrowski's amendment, which is to, I'll read the motion as it would be with Mr. Petrowski's amendment. Motion to approve Wednesdays as the one-day student independent project learning day for the remainder of the 2020, 2021 school year period, which eliminates as long as school is designated green or yellow. All in favor? Well, no, wait, I'll call the roll. Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
I also am yes, passes unanimously. So now, does anyone else want to offer an additional amendment to this motion?
No, my intention wasn't to complicate things. My intention was to clarify.
I, I understand that. And so if you want to offer something that, like I already suggested, that would be fine. Everybody else okay? I'm going to call this vote then. So the motion now reads to approve, I've read this 14 times now. Motion to approve Wednesdays as the one-day student independent project learning day for the remainder of the 2020, 2021 school year. Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
I as well. Motion passes 5-0 unanimously. Thank you, everyone. We'll move on to new business now. Motion to accept the remote teacher job description. I'll entertain that motion, please.
I move to accept the remote teacher job description.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we accept the remote teacher job description. You have that description in your packet? Take a look at that.
Jenny?
Yes.
Excuse me. Did we have a C to, a motion to approve the first reading of the DJR in Exhibits 1 and 2?
It's under, it's under new business.
Oh, it's under new business. I'm sorry, I thought it was under old business.
Yeah.
No, it's, no, because it's brand new.
Sorry about that.
Chairperson Guyer?
That's both of you so far have accused me of not being able to read this evening.
I don't think I did.
Yes, you did.
We
Sorry.
It's really quite all right. Sometimes I need the help.
I, this is a new procedure for me. I, I need to know, is this a one, is this approved? Or do you do, like a policy, do this in two readings?
One reading.
Thank you.
Yep. So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion and from the public? If there's any public discussion about this particular item, would you please type it out now? Discussion from the school committee? Oh, Ms. Fawcett?
I just have one correction that I'd like you to address.
Yes, ma'am.
On the fourth to last bullet, it references some very old language and says the PET.
Oh, yes, IEP, yeah. Yes. Ms. Sousa, did you, did you get that? Hello, Ms. Sousa? Did you?
Yes, she is.
Okay, that was a thumbs up. All right, thank you very much. Okay, anything else with that, Ms. Fawcett? No, you, you blinked out, so we're good there. Discussion from the school committee? And I'm still looking for any public comment typed out. Ooh, okay. I don't see any public comment. I'll call the roll then. Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
I as well. Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. We're going to move on now to, well, Mr. Petrowski is going to sort of take over. I'd like to change this motion around a little bit. I think, Mr. Petrowski, it would be better if we voted per resolution as opposed to try to vote on all the resolutions because we didn't agree with the whole body of the resolutions. We haven't for a couple of years now, so. So I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Petrowski. And what I'd like to hear is a motion to approve each one of the four motions as, as quickly as we can move through it.
I can, I can make the motion that we approve the first resolution, which is the development of a distance learning plan.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Petrowski, take it away.
Well, I can tell you that within this particular first resolution, I don't think there's anything in it that differs from what we've already done. Okay, or at least we're in the process of doing. I do like the, really the last sentence the most where it says we increase the broadband access as a key to educational equity, equity for main students. There's no question that it makes a big difference no matter where it is in the state in terms of the capability of the students and the teachers using their laptops, et cetera, if we do not have a good broadband situation. But that's also a state objective, too. It's already been started. We've approved some bond money for it. And it's going to take a while to take and get all the right cables everywhere. But I think we've made great progress, and a lot of that's due to the fact that we have somebody here on staff, okay? Mike, who has really done a great job of seizing it. And I'm sure I'll probably vote for spending all the money on, on expansion of that list if you're not going to approve my bus.
Discussion from the school committee about the, the first development of distance learning plan resolution. Don't see anybody? Well, let's go through this quickly then. Those are, so what, just, just to remind everybody, what we're doing right now is that Mr. Petrowski is our delegate. And we're directing him to vote in a specific way.
So a yes vote would be to approve it, and a no vote would be to oppose it or to amend it.
Right, so do you just need to take role on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, let the chair take it.
Is Jenny frozen? She may be frozen, she's not moving on my screen.
No, she's not moving. Jenny, where are you?
So we, all three of us, Jenny and Colleen and I are at the office. And the whole thing about our, our internet is unstable. I don't think the internet's the only thing unstable. But anyway, it's, so she may be, she's gone.
Yes.
She probably rebooted.
Would the vice chairman like to take over for a moment?
Yes, absolutely. So I'll call the roll. Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
And I say yes for this one. So you have our support for that first resolution?
Thank you. The second one is entitled Building Stronger Family Support for Education. I really like this particular resolution because I think we are trying to do that here if only using our Wednesdays as an opportunity to talk to parents and care, other caregivers as well as our students. But it's, it's calling for greater involvement by parents or guardians in their child's education is essential. I'm proud to say that adopting the Zoom program, I think, is part of this particular resolution because we gave away, we created a way for parents to easily participate in a school board meeting. And certainly, we were not accomplishing all of that by just having the meetings in person, although we could go back to that and still continue the Zoom broadcast, too. But they want to create the partnership between the caregivers and the schools. I think that's something that we, we believe in. The ultimate goal is to identify the needs of both adults and children. That's one of the things that we definitely need to do. And then, of course, they continue on to a rationale. And the only thing I found out about this that seemed to create a problem here was that it looked to me like they admitted that one of the difficulties of contacting they admitted that one of the difficulties of contacting parents during the day is that many of them are not available. And so that one of the steps we'd have to take is asking some of our school staff to take and make themselves available in the evening to do those types of conflict communications. And, and I think we could do that. I don't think that's a question. But I think this is, this entire resolution really is, is something that we can support, because I think we believe that we do want to have greater communication and participation of the family in the educational process.
Okay. Any comments regarding this from the school committee regarding this?
I see Jenny.
Resolution?
Jenny's over there with Jim. She's in the background hiding.
I see her.
Really flexible tonight. Go ahead, Kristen.
Anyone? Any comments before I take the roll? No? Okay. Then I will call a vote. Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Mrs. Bells?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Guyer?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so support for that one as well.
Well, certainly, the third one, which talks about equity in education, to me is a spillover from all the protests and concerns that people have had about trying to do more to take and get rid of bullying, to get rid of racism, to provide the same opportunities for everyone, and make sure that nobody is left out in this process. And some of this will begin with a self-examination with this resolution and a discussion to recognize what are we doing here in this school system or any school system? And to adopt policies and practices that will eliminate biased and stereotyping that does take place. There's a growing awareness of this. However, the feeling is from the study that was done by the MSEA and their board that the growing awareness sometimes is not recognized or acknowledged in some of our public schools. And from some of the accounts I've read in some of the newspapers, I think that's probably true. And it's really the focus idea that we're going to have to intentionally want to change our process and, and look to see what, what are, what are those processes and behaviors that we have need to be changed. So that's the essence of the Equity in Education Resolution.
Any comments from the school committee?
I have a question.
Go ahead. I can't hear you. What?
Point of order?
Sure.
Want to get a motion?
Are we getting motions for these?
Yeah. Well, we did, we did the last two, didn't we?
I don't, we didn't get one for the last one.
Okay. We probably should.
Join Jana.
I think that was for the distance learning plan.
Accept the equity, that we, that we support the equity in education motion.
I second that. All right, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I guess I, I don't know even, even if you can answer this, but what does it mean a self-examination?
Well, they're volunteering the leadership of the main School Boards Association, which is really the people they're volunteering, and not necessarily the staff people, but the teachers who occupy various positions of leadership based upon how we've divided up the state. Is it eight groups that we have in the state? And that they themselves, within their own district, would form a group which would help to design the self-examination, and if they needed to monitor it or something like that, lead discussions. My feeling is the MSEA would be making those people available to us. That's about the best I can tell you.
Okay, so I mean, I, these are all new to me, so excuse my ignorance, but so if, if we're supporting this, we're supporting something, but we're not exactly sure what they're going to be doing, is that correct?
Well, I would argue that we do know what they're going to do. They're going to come in with some kind of a program that contains a self-examination, that they'd be asking everybody to participate in.
But we don't know what kind of a self-examination or what will happen.
Still got to be designed, that they'd hire some experts to design it.
My comment about that would be that I just wonder if there's yet one more thing that we can do this year. I, I think we have enough to do.
It's a valid, valid comment.
It's a good point.
We could, we could amend this, suggest that that, that we support this resolution. However, there are outstanding questions regarding how it will be done, how much time it will occupy, especially in a COVID year. I mean, maybe their plan is not to do it this year. Maybe their plan is to just work on getting leaders this year. I don't know.
Go ahead, Mr. Hodgkin.
So I, I, I can't share a lot of information about this because only a few of us that know, but there's, I, I'm going to suggest that this is something that the Winter Public Schools wants to support because we have, we have some issues that we're, we are dealing with, we're going to be forced to deal with. And that's going to be the essence of it, is about, you know, and I think about where we started with the, the the specific statement around Black Lives Matter. But I think, you know, the, I think about what this school committee was, was saying to me, what I was saying when I came on board about concerns in the district, particularly at the high school around bullying or, or antisocial behaviors, and I, I, I think we're doing this, whether, whatever stance you take with this, with this, but it would seem odd to me that you wouldn't vote to support this, or let me say it this way, if you didn't vote to support it, and we did it anyway, that would feel a little weird.
Go ahead, Sue. No, it's okay. I can wait. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I guess my confusion is, is would this be taken out of our hands and somebody, somebody else would come in and handle all of this, and we wouldn't be in charge of it? I guess that's what I'd like to know.
Well, I think if you, if Joe, if you're looking for some feedback from this committee, I would say that you, I would like to recommend that you support this, this resolution, and that you do add that, you know, the piece in there about, you know, essentially that you, I tried to think what you just said, Sue, because you said what I was thinking.
Is, would it be us in control of that, or would somebody from the outside be coming in that?
Yeah, I think we need to be really, yeah, it does say in the, in the language district leaders, so I, I think what, what I, what I would envision happening is that the state would put together a cadre or some, some programs that people can use if they don't have people that would address these issues, but I think we do, and, and I think we will address these issues. So I guess what I would, where I was going with that is, you know, I think you need to make sure, Joe, that this cannot be a, something that's driven by the Department of Education, thou shalt type thing.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that expectation that we have to address these types of issues in our schools in our state is an absolute must. How we do it needs to be a local control decision.
So my comment around this was going to be that I know that we are evaluating our curriculum all the time in other areas, and I think that this, supporting this is extremely important, but secondly, I think that it very easily can be worked into what we're already doing, is that with, with training. And I feel like a lot of our administrators were trained. Am I, am I not remembering that correctly over the summer, that there was some training going on around this? But if not, then there should be. And, and then it can be worked into on how do you look at your curriculum and make sure that there isn't bias and stereotyping in that. And then my second question was going to be, do, don't we already have policies in, within our district already about, around this? I didn't look into it beforehand, so I could be wrong, but I was thinking that we must have something.
We do, we do, but they're not as specific as when you start off your first sentence, you know, regardless of their race, color, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, those are not necessarily words that we've used in our policy, although it all gets to the same thing at the end of it. You treat people as equals. You don't shun them, you don't bully them, all of those types of things, which you're more likely to find in our policies.
Go ahead, Mr. Hodgkin.
I, I did want to say, first of all, that you are, you are correct. We did have some training. It wasn't just for the leaders. It was the entire pre-K through 12 staff had the trauma-informed schools presentations. That was because we had to figure out a way to get it in. They only got three or four hours of training. And, and hopefully, and I hadn't even thought about this until you said that, but that might be, I know that that training was very, very well received by our staff, and, and that would maybe seem like a logical place for us to consider some additional training or maybe some additional guidance in moving forward with this resolution.
Any other discussion? Okay. So I will call the roll. Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Mrs. Bells?
I, I guess I just have to clarify again what Mr. Hodgkin said about it being at, at a local level. Is that what I'm agreeing to here or not?
Well, that's the position I'll take with me. Okay. That.
Okay.
We, we, we're very, which is what I tried to say in the beginning, but not in the right words. This thing scares me as written, that they're going to come down on us with something that really doesn't take into account how we want it done.
Right.
I think the idea is necessary. I agree with the superintendent that it's very important that we have some clear understanding of what we're trying to do, but that we also show the community that we are very much in favor of having everyone have an equal opportunity here. And there's no if, buts, or maybe about.
Okay, so like I said, as long as that's the way you're presenting it, then I can agree with it.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and Sue, just, I think that it says right there, Main School Boards Association believes all district leaders should facilitate a self-examination and discussion. So to me, that seems very internal.
Okay.
Jenny, you have a comment?
I think in a way that it would be a very good idea to, for us to support this because it's, it's a job that needs to be done, has to be done, and with the Main School Boards Association making this suggestion, I think they're doing it before the state might come down on us with their own program. So this is us trying to take care of ourselves, which, which might be more in tune to what it is you want, Sue. And I do think it says very clearly district leaders there, so. We're good.
Okay.
Mr. Hodgkin, I was, I was in the middle of taking a vote, so we're now back to discussion.
Oh, that's, that's really war. Sorry.
This, I'd like to suggest that I, I don't want to beat this horse anymore, but I would really love to hear what Amelie and Josh have to say about this after you're done taking the vote.
Okay. I will open it up to the student representatives after I finish the vote. Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Guyer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. So the motion passes five zero. Okay. Josh or Amelie?
Oh, yeah, I voted before.
All right, you, yes, that was before the second discussion. Anything? Josh, go ahead.
I'll let Amelie go first.
Um, yeah, I think it is super important, like Mr. Petrowski said, that all of the students feel comfortable and supported, and you know, we're using vocabulary that includes everybody.
I'm writing this down. Okay, thank you, Amelie. Josh, anything else to add?
Um, I agree with Amelie hundred percent. I think, I think, yes, it might come down to a state level, and maybe we're trying to get ahead of it, but I guess we'll be prepared for that. I just think trying to make students feel welcome and included is definitely something that we should be fighting for, so.
Okay, Mr. Petrowski, so you have all perspectives on this one? So we'll move on to our next motion about.
The next and final one, number four, talks about board meeting remote participation. One of my favorite types of subjects. And essentially, what it says is that they are planning on introducing legislation in the next legislative session that will allow such meetings under public records law, which essentially means that you will always have the option of having a, a person participate in your board meetings, including the committee member, to me, remotely, if that happens, it's more practical. And so I'm a big supporter of Zooming, so the point is, is that I just think it's, it's important to do it, and the decision to use this option, however, in the legislation will be a local one. So it's possible that some school committees will insist that the committee has to meet in person. They don't all have to go along with this, so it's a little bit of an out there.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
Motion would be is that we support the board meeting remote participation. That we support it, yes.
Okay, so Joe, you're making that motion?
Yes.
Okay, second?
Second.
Jenny? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion from the committee? Anything on this one? No? Okay, I'll take the roll. Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Mrs. Bells?
Yep.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Guyer?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so you have our support on that one as well, Joe.
Thank you very much. And now we have a folder.
Okay. Okay, Jenny, can you take over again?
Yeah, if you don't mind looking at me like this.
No, go for it.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept for first reading policy DJ dash R. Is that, oh.
Procedure.
What's that?
It's procedure.
Procedure. I love that, too. And exhibits one and two.
Still move? Second?
Who, who, what was that? Kristen and Sue?
Jana. I thought Jana moved.
Jana moved, Kristen seconded.
Hey, Jana and Kristen. And a public comment here, if anyone wants to comment on this particular procedure, and we'll ask the superintendent to do a quick explanation of this particular policy or procedure.
Let me do it first?
Yeah.
Okay, actually, this is very quick, this is federal law. And the, the only other explanation I would have to say is we got additional feedback from main school management on this procedure and the exhibits. So what may be a little bit new for, for some of the school committee is the notion of exhibits. They really, you should have a policy, policies also often have procedures, which is always dash R. So we have a policy DJ, we're supposed to have DGR, DJR. So this puts the policy in, the procedure in that's supposed to be there. And then we got additional notes that are clarification from main school management, and those were added as exhibits. So you have exhibit one and exhibit two. There is no subjectivity with this document, so there really isn't, you can vote to not approve this and you'd be, you'd be violating federal law.
Great.
So let's move right ahead with this.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a roll. Shonway?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
No. Oh, excuse me, oh, I, I understand what you're doing, okay? Yeah, I'll grudgingly vote yes, I don't like big brother telling me what to do.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Motion passes.
Could the students serve my time?
Um, this is our, for the, for the whole community that's with us, this is your opportunity to make a comment about anything having to do with Winthrop education. So I'll give you a moment to compose a comment. Okay, seeing nothing. We'll move into school committee comments. And also, so I just, for our, for our student folks, if you choose to say nothing, that's perfectly all right, and you just use the magic word pass. Why, all of us can do that. Ms. Bells, would you like to start us off?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, I would just like to say a thank you to Melissa Perkins, who is gonna be streaming most of the football, soccer, and field hockey games.
Wow.
Yeah, so, you know, for, for folks who can't make it for whatever reason, or grandparents or whatever, I just really like to thank her for volunteering to do that.
That's very cool, thank you. Um, Ms. Dykett?
I just wanted to say thank you to Amanda for, in central office, with Sue and I are, have been doing a lot of the warrants. And it's just been very organized. She started a whole COVID folder binder and split some of the invoices where they need to go. So I just really appreciate all her work and everyone who's been in there doing that work, too, because I know we're trying to keep accounts separate so that we have everything streamlined for the auditor and all that. So I just really appreciate that. And then I've been lucky enough to attend a couple of field hockey game scrimmages and just seeing, you know, how astute Joel has been with everything that's going on with this, and I'm sure that's happening at the football and soccer games as well, and anyone else who has put time and effort, being able to allow people to be there in the capacity that we have been, these have been inner squad scrimmages, so we have been able to attend. So I just really appreciate the opportunity and congratulations to golf, who I believe it is onwards to states as well, and to all the kids who have started their sports seasons.
Thank you, Ms. Dykett. Mr. Petrowski?
Well, thank you. I was also gonna thank Joel for getting the information out that we were going to have a streaming of the games. I tried to download the app, nothing's worked for me, so I'm still without a contract, but I'm gonna get it. And I know tonight they canceled the soccer game and moved it to Friday, so hopefully I'll be up and running by then for the rest of the week. One thing, there's actually a couple little things, but one, is it Amelie, is that how you pronounce it?
Amelie.
Amelie, okay. That must be Russian or Polish or something like that. Anyway, glad to have you join us, always love to have Josh here, it's nice to have two people, and this will really add to what we're trying to do. I did wanna give a little heads up, and some of this should go directed to Megan White, because I know that the superintendent will assign it to her anyway. But I've been reading some things and, and I've noticed that there's such a concern out there about the students are getting behind. And it's like, boom, you know, they lost a half a year last year and results weren't out. Well, in some cases were very good, but in some cases they weren't. And then we've got this year, and some of this is an experiment, but we're doing much better than I think anybody thought we could do, especially with the remote part of it. But my understanding is that they're going to put a lot of, they're going to try to pull a lot of information from these national tests, whether they be, was it a W A R, whatever you guys take, or an S A T or something like that. And I don't blame them for doing that, but one of the things they're looking at is trying to say, where should these kids have been, or maybe they got there, we don't know for sure. And so we're going to, in some ways, have to be, I think, preparing for these tests. And I think we're gonna also have to do our own internal examination of how successful they are, too. And, but there's a catch-up factor here. And that's what people are saying, that we've got to take and catch up the students that we have in school to the time that they've missed and to the new process of trying to learn remotely. But other than that, I hear very good things about what's happening in school, at least here at Winthrop, and that's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Petrowski. Um, Mr. Deanda Whelan?
Alrighty, I don't wanna extend this more than it has to be. I, I wrote a little poem for our new, for our new student representative, Amelie. Prostic poems are something I like to do sometimes. I'm not saying I'm good at them, but this is a little fun way. So ready? A is for Amelie, that's how you pronounce her name. But also, she is aware, she is alert, and she is alive. She is very well-informed and she's very conscious of the world around her, which is a great trait for a student representative. M is for mature. Although she's a sophomore, she's one of the most mature people I know. I think this is gonna be great and whatnot. Okay, E, she's exemplary. She's an exemplary student at Winthrop High School, and I think a lot of students should strive to be like Amelie Groove. I strive to be like Amelie Groove. L is for lovable. There are too many reasons to list, but just know that at the end of the day, you're gonna end up loving Amelie Groove. I is for intelligent. She helps me with my math homework, I'm not gonna lie. And E is for excellent. She's gonna be an excellent fit for this position. And not to discredit Mr. Campbell's pick for picking her for this position, but I, I wish, he beat me to it, I have to say. I was gonna nominate her, although it's supposed to be usually geared towards juniors, I just felt that she was gonna be the pick, and I guess life just wanted it to be that way, so congratulations, Amelie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Well, Amelie, if you're turning pink, I can, it looks like that even on one of these Zoom pictures, but the, it's your turn to get even with Josh, but um, do you have anything you wanna say, it's fine to pass.
I wanna, well, first, thank you to Josh for that lovely poem and also for pushing me and, well, encouraging me to take this position, because I'm very glad that I did. And to Ms. Geyer for helping me adjust and really making me feel a lot more comfortable, and all of the committee members for welcoming me. And I'm so thankful that I was given this opportunity. And a huge thank you to all of the teachers and Mr. Campbell and everybody at the school who has worked so hard to make this year's success so far and to make sure that all the students are safe and getting their education. And I'm, despite, well, even with all, everything that is going on, I'm very excited to see how this year will go. So thank you to everybody so much.
Great job. I, I didn't tell anybody that, that you and I spent the better part of, what, Monday afternoon together? Yes, getting that orientation, so I do hope that you're quite comfortable with everybody, so. Uh, Ms. Shonway?
Yes, thank you. Amelie, I couldn't have said it better myself. So I'll just reiterate quickly that thanks to all the teachers and staff for all your continued hard work. I know it's hard work, even though a lot of times what I say during meetings might come across as maybe not, or taken as not being appreciative of what everybody is doing. I wholeheartedly know how hard of a job all of this has been and the monumental effort it has taken to get our district where it is. And then the second thing I wanna say is, I just want to congratulate and thank our student athletes for their maturity and for taking the opportunity that the school committee gave them at the last meeting to participate in sports and to make it, to make it their own and to make adjustments and changes that worked for each team individually. And I was just really proud to hear of them, the meetings that were had and the coaches working with them and really coming up with solutions to allow community spectators, especially senior parents, to be able to participate. And I just think that as community members and parents, that maybe we should look to our students as examples of maturity at times and how graciously they have accepted what this year has put in front of them, and they're making the best of it, and they're very gracious for the opportunities that they have. And I, they just make me really proud of, and set a good example that I think that our community should, should look to. So I wanted to make sure that our students are aware of, of just how great they are. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shonway. And finally, I don't think there's much left for me to say, so I will end up most of this meeting then with the same words that I've said for the last three or four meetings, and that is, no matter what you think about COVID, whether it exists or it doesn't exist, this is a time for cooperation, not rebelliousness. And we sure do appreciate all of our co-op, all of everyone's cooperation as we move forward to do the best job we know how to produce an opportunity for all of your children to get a good education. Thank you very much, I'll entertain a motion for, to adjourn. Ms. Bells?
To adjourn?
Second?
And I'll declare this motion, oh, if I had my hammer, I'll declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.